Good evening and thank you for joining us for our April 8th regular school board meeting at this time. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, members of the board. We are working off a revised agenda today, which includes the addition of elementary school number 20 bid results to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the revised agenda as outlined?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Art, second by Suchin. All those in favor of approving the revised agenda say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously on a seven zero vote. Brings us to our first item on the agenda today is our recognition portion of the board meeting. At this time, I would like to welcome Eagan High School Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Sandy Sederlarsen to the podium to introduce us to the Excel and AAA Award winners.
Woo hoo. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. Thanks for having us here tonight. I am presenting the state level award winners of the two recognition programs of the MSHSL, and we are very proud to have a state winner in both programs for Eagan High School. I'm going to start with Lila Bartels and the Excel Award. The Excel recognition program is for high school juniors, and these are students who are active in the fine arts or and/or athletic activities, showing leadership qualities and who are model citizens in their community. Each of the 525-plus schools in the Minnesota State High School League get to submit two of their winners, and Lila is one of the Eagan High School winners, and she was selected by a committee at the MSHSL as one of 34 total winners in the state of Minnesota. It's a very tough competition. The 34 state winners were recognized during an on-court ceremony at the AA State Championship in girls' basketball, and were also on Channel 45, kind of a cool deal. All of us have gifts. I think Lila's gift is the gift of care. Lisa Langenhahn, Lila's both cross-country and track coach, had this to say about Lila. "Lila is one of the first athletes after a race to give words of encouragement and to be a shoulder to lean on. She is an excellent teammate and competitor. At practice, Lila is always cheering on her teammates and makes sure that every girl gets the attention they need and deserve. She is a positive role model for the younger athletes by her work ethic and determination to reach the goals she has set for herself and the team. Lila leads by example and works hard to make an individual sport seem like a family." In her application, Lila had to answer the question of what qualities make a great leader. Here is one part of her answer. "One commonality within every community of the world is that people want to belong and feel value. A good leader will go out of their way to reach out to someone and show them that they are valued. In order to motivate the group you lead to be their best selves, a leader must show them that they are important and helping them to be their best." So true. Lila's a tremendous student. She has a 4.0. We call that tremendous. It's pretty good. Lila is also on our cross country and track teams at Eagan, where she has earned all-conference in both sports, all-state academic in both sports, was named a captain for cross-country, is qualified for the Minnesota State High School League tournaments in both of her sports, and she's earned all-state in cross-country and received several other awards. Lila also has been very active in our arts community as well at Eagan. She's part of our percussion ensemble that performed at the Minnesota Music Educators Association, and she's a section leader in band. Lila has also been on our speech team for all three years, and she has been to the MSHSL state tournament in speech, so she is very well-rounded. Lila has also served as a member of our link crew, spends time volunteering with several organizations by serving people, animals, and cleaning our roadways. Her band teacher, Michael Pearson, had this to say. "Lila is always grateful and provides guidance and inspiration. Those of us who are lucky enough to work with Lila on a regular basis are frequently inspired by her drive, determination, and her desire for everyone around her to succeed along with her on this high school, educational, artistic, and athletic journey." Lila is the daughter of Renee and Reed Bartels, and they're here tonight. Would you guys give a quick wave? Thank you. Appreciate it. And Lila, I'm going to go have you sit down, and Jack, come on up. Jack Krueger is our AAA Award winner. The AAA is the Hallmark Award of the MSHSL. The AAA Award is an academics, arts, and athletics award, so students have to excel in all three areas. Each of the over 525 Minnesota State High School League schools can select two winners from their building who are moved on to the region level, and then the region winners are moved on to the state. There were 32 selected winners from across the state that were honored at a very fancy banquet at the Lois Hotel in downtown Minneapolis a couple of weeks ago, and all 32 finalists then also participated in an on-court ceremony during the class AAA championship game of the boys' basketball state tournament shortly after the banquet. Jack is a four-year member of our football team, where he's been named all-conference and was the defensive MVP. This fall, he was recognized at US Bank Stadium as part of the all-state academic team. He played basketball through his junior year and received the Wildcat Award that celebrated his positive impact on team members. Jack is also a four-year letter award winner in track and field and qualified for the state tournament last year in the pole vault, made all-conference in that sport as well, as well as, I believe, he was academic all-state in track and field, too. He has served as captain in both football and track and field. Jack is very engaged and successful in the arts as well. He's a four-year member in our band and has been in Eagan's highest band since he was a sophomore. That's our Wind Ensemble. He has received superior ratings, and this year he was selected for the Minnesota All-State Concert Band. Jack, too, is a 4.0 student. He's very smart, but grades really don't drive him. He has a love of learning and a very curious intellect. Jack's honors biology and outdoor science teacher and football coach, Mr. Nathan Dunn, had this to say about Jack. "Jack has consistently demonstrated his ability to positively impact those around him in both the classroom and athletic arenas. No matter the environment, Jack has shown time and time again that he truly cares about gaining understanding about our natural world. In my classroom, Jack would often play the role of question master, whose job it was to ensure that the group had developed an understanding of a topic at hand rather than just simply answer a bunch of questions. Jack's team would routinely run out of time while in class because they were so deeply engaged in conversation. No matter the topic of class, I truly believe that Jack is simply dedicated to learning and helping others develop an understanding." On his AAA application, Jack had to answer the question of how his involvement developed him as a person. Here's what Jack had to say. "The high school experience has so much to offer, and taking advantage as much of it as I could is showing me how important it is to take myself out of my comfort zone, because that is where I've seen my greatest periods of growth. Athletics has taught me about discipline, coachability, leadership, and being committed to something bigger than myself. The arts have taught me about utilizing emotion and vulnerability to create beauty. My academics have taught me to be curious and how to learn from others. Together, these three areas of my life have equipped me with skills and tools so that I'm ready for college and beyond." Beautiful. Here's what I love about Jack. He's humble. He's gracious. He's a kind person, and everything he does, he does well and with goodness and grace. Jack is headed to North Dakota State University to study engineering. He plans on continuing in the band and also in track and field that AAA will continue to follow him. Jack is the son of Katie and Joe Krueger. They could not be here tonight, but I want to recognize them. Members of the board, I am very proud to present to you two fabulous products of District 196 Educational and Co-curricular Programs, the AAA and Excel Level State Award winners, Mr. Jack Krueger and Ms. Lila Bartels.
Thank you for being an outstanding role model.
Congratulations, Jack. Such a amazing job.
Thank you for being an outstanding role model.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great. Next, I would like to welcome Principal Tony Washington to the podium to introduce us to the Red Pine Elementary School Destination Imagination State Tournament Placers.
I could remember we'd sing the Red Pine song, but I can't remember it.
All right. Good evening, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, and members of the school board. A couple of weeks ago, the Destination Imagination Team, Girls on the Go, completed a team challenge at Coon Rapids Middle School. The seven-member team is coached by Christine Pastrolo and includes fifth graders Hannah Bolstorf, Claire Briggs, Rayellen Francis, Lauren Kieselak. Did I pronounce that correct? Say that again. Koeslack, sorry. Annalise Molda, Collette Moses, and Addison Pastrola. The team was given a task to complete a service learning project and create a fantasy skit educating others about their project of choice. With the help of the amazing Red Pine community, they created 149 birthday boxes to donate to the Community 360. Through a lot of hard work as a team, they were able to create an awesome skit, props, and background, all staying within a strict budget. You guys should be principals. Their hard work paid off with the girls and were awarded first place and an invitation to Global's in Kansas City, Missouri. The girls who this includes, Christine Pastrola, our parent helper, our parent leader, Claire Biggs, Hannah Bolstorf, Rayellen Francis, Lauren Koeslack, Annalise Molda, Collette Moses, and Addison Pastrola again. Congratulations to you guys. For the second team, the Limiting Litter Team won second place in the Service Learning Challenge at the Destination Imagination State Competition. The seven-member team is coached by parent Erin Carey and includes Ellie Alstrom, Grace Fritter, Mitra Karthik, Abigail Carey, Isabella Carey, Elise McGrane, and Lila Pierce. They are all fifth graders except for Abigail Carey, who's a fourth grader. These students created a short video promoting not littering and a safe environment. They also made presentations to all of our Red Pine, sorry, second and third grade students, explaining the importance of not littering and taking care of our environment. Our second and third grade teachers were very impressed, and they said they did an awesome job of presenting and encouraging their students not to litter and to take good care of our environment. You guys are very, very important to Red Pine, and we appreciate all of your service and all of your hard work. Congratulations.
Congratulations. How many birthday boxes?
149.
Jesus.
Well done.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Oh my goodness. So amazing. So amazing.
Sorry, my hands are so cold. Congratulations.
What a great idea, the birthday boxes. Congratulations. Thank you so much for coming.
My hands are so cold. Sorry. Congratulations. Congratulations. That's a good handshake, too. Nice.
Right, your handshake was solid.
So good.
I know.
Super.
Just amazing. Last up, under our recognition tonight, I would like to welcome Head Varsity Coach Kevin McKenzie to the podium to introduce us to the Minnesota Class AAA Boys Basketball Third Place finishers.
All right. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. I'm Coach Kevin McKenzie, and these are representatives from our basketball team. We have this year's captains, next year's captains, and a sophomore who happens to be my son. First, I want to do some thank yous. I want to thank you guys for providing an environment for us to thrive, for these guys to accomplish their goals, giving us the resources we need. We appreciate it. We understand that you guys take part in that. I want to thank our families. We do have one family here today, the Schreppers. If you give them a hand, it's always important to have families here. Want to thank our coaches that aren't here, but I would not survive without my assistant coaches. It's a long season, and they do a great job of promoting and helping us. I want to thank our community members, our youth program, our middle school program, just everybody working with these guys throughout the years. It's not just the high school. This starts a lot before high school, and so our community members are a big part of this, and I want to thank our administration for allowing us the opportunity, specifically Sandy, for always having our back and creating an environment for us to do what we do best. So thanks to Sandy. If we can give her a hand, I'd appreciate it. We had a really solid season, a total record of 19 and 13. We were the number one seed in our section for the first time in 19 years. We went to the state for the first time in 19 years, and while we were there, we had a great run, an upset victory over Park Center. I think it's the first time an unseeded team beat a seeded team, so it was like a 7-2 upset. Guys played great. Had a little hiccup there against Minnetonka. We won't talk about that, but finished strong in the third-place game versus Creighton, and these guys played fantastic. And the biggest strength of this group has been their chemistry, how they play for each other. They've all grown up. It's a really prideful thing for us to say that all these guys have been in the program since freshman year. They've lived in the community. They've played with each other, and we really build within our community. It's an important thing for me to have and to say. So that's one thing that I'm really proud of these guys for, and just the way that they play for each other was really impressive. So I'd like to introduce them. First, we have next year junior captain Alex Lan. Next to him is next year captain, junior Wesley Hoak. We also have another captain for next year, junior Kai Strunk. And then also captain going into next year, and he was part of the all-tournament team, 10 guys selected, sophomore Alex Schreppfer. And then in the next row, the bigger guys, these are our seniors, and they've really done a great job helping to build our program up. First, we have senior captain Leah Madigan and senior captain Trevor Searing. And senior captain Max Busley. And then the one non-captain here today, Michael McKenzie. Again, I want to thank you guys all for having us here today. We really appreciate everything everybody does for us, and we hope we made you guys proud, and we'll continue to try to do the same thing moving forward. Thank you.
Congratulations. Well done.
Fantastic job.
Congratulations.
Awesome job. Congratulations. Great job. Love it. Congratulations. Awesome job. Congratulations.
Good luck. Congratulations.
Great job. Very welcome. Congratulations. Awesome job.
Great. Always great being able to start our board meetings off with some great recognition, but that doesn't come to an end just yet, because I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for her recognition of students and staff.
And we do have a few more. Congratulations to the Rosemont High School Girls Basketball Team competing in this year's Class 4A State Tournament. Congratulations to the Dakota United Hawks on winning the PI Division of the Adapted Floor Hockey State Tournament in March. In addition, the Hawks CI Team finished in third place, and we will recognize the PI Team at the next regular board meeting on May 6. And finally, congratulations to the Mock Trial Teams from Apple Valley and Eastview High School on qualifying for and competing in this year's State Tournament in March sponsored by the Minnesota State Bar Association.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We don't have anyone signed up for special communication requests tonight, so that brings us to our consent agenda. We have 21 items on the consent agenda tonight. Those items include revised school board committee assignments and appointments for 2024, minutes of March 11, 2024, special school board meeting, minutes of March 11, 2024, regular school board meeting, minutes of March 21, 2024, special school board meeting, minutes of April 4, 2024, special school board meeting, advertising revenue, gifts, grants, scheduled investments for February 2024, summary of claims for February 2024, revenue and expenditures report for February 2024, treasures report for February 2024, elementary school number 20 bid results, 2024-25 tuition rates for foreign students, personnel, intent to place continuing contract teachers on unrequested leaves of absences, pay rates for substitute temporary and part-time employees, termination and nonrenewal of probationary teachers, policy 507 student fees and fines, policy 710 food and nutrition services, and District 196 Volunteer Appreciation Week, April 22 through the 26, 2024. Are there any items that school board members would like to remove from the consent agenda tonight? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Second? Motion by Suchin, second by Sakoudin. Is that right? Thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on a seven zero vote. We have no items under reports tonight, so that brings us to our old business, and I would like to welcome Danny Duchaine up to the podium to go over the second reading of our fiscal year 2024-25 capital expenditure budget.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board, and our District 196 stakeholders. My name is Danny Duchaine, Coordinator of Finance here in District 196. Tonight, District Administration presents the 2024-25 capital expenditure budget for a second reading and a recommendation of approval. Just to remind everyone, the capital expenditure budget is presented to the school board earlier than our complete preliminary budget for the following school year. This is for a couple of different reasons. A lot of these projects and items have a lot longer procurement process. They either need to be formally bid out, we need to find quotes, or as a consequence of the pandemic, some things are still just taking a long lead time to be able to be delivered into our district. Also, many of these projects are completed over the summer months, when our buildings are less full of people. So we like to get school board approval prior to, so those procurement processes can begin and everything can be ready by the time we start school in September. We'll be bringing back the complete 2024-25 preliminary budget to the board for consideration at the June meetings. At the school board's March 11 meeting, Director of Finance and Operations Christopher Niango Robshaw presented the board with a summary of each of the three capital expenditure budgets: the operating capital budget, the long-term facilities maintenance budget, and the capital projects technology levy. This summary outlined the projected beginning fund balances, the resources available, and the planned expenditures in each of those categories. Since that board meeting in March, district staff has worked to create the complete 2024-25 capital budget book, which is included in your board packet tonight. This capital book includes updated budget summaries on pages seven through nine, as well as listings of the current planned expenditures within each of the three budget categories for sites and departments. To provide a quick summary, in the operating capital budget, we project $16.4 million in resources available for 24-25 against $14.6 in planned expenditures for an ending fund balance at the end of the 24-25 school year of $1.8 million. In the long-term facilities maintenance budget, we project $14.8 million in resources available against $12 million in planned expenditures. This will leave us with an ending fund balance at the end of the 2024-25 school year of $2.8 million. And in the capital projects technology levy, we project $11.3 million in resources available for next year against $7.5 million in planned expenditures, leaving us with a projected ending fund balance at the end of the 24-25 school year of roughly $3.7 million. At this time, we'd like to respectfully ask for approval of the 2024-25 capital expenditure budget, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
This is an action item tonight, so before we go into questions, is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Motion by Jackie, seconded by Leah. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Let's see any. This is our second reading. Just one question. If anyone, any member of the public wanted to take a look at this, is this posted on our district website that they can look at as well?
Assuming approval goes through tonight, it will be posted tomorrow morning.
Perfect. Excellent. It's also on board docs, of course, if anyone wanted to look at the draft. Thank you so much. We have a motion to approve by Jackie, seconded by Leah. All those in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a seven zero vote. Thank you very much. Great. We have no items for new business tonight, so that brings us to our other action items. I'd like to welcome Shelley Munson to the podium to go over our collective bargaining agreement with the Support Staff Association of Independent School District 196.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Krieger. Before you tonight, I have the collective bargaining agreement with the school district's custodial grounds, maintenance, warehouse employees. These employees are represented by Support Staff Association of District 196, and they ratified this proposed agreement on March 23. This is our last two-year agreement for the July 1, 2023 to the June 30, 2025 period of time. I'll highlight a few terms for you. The wage and differential schedules in this agreement were increased by 4% in the first year and 3.5% in the second year. There were a few other adjustments to differentials for our lead custodians, who take that role in the evenings, and also a new differential for our custodians who are in a couple of our buildings where there is no building engineer or supervisor in those buildings. The longevity pay schedule was increased by 2% each year. The district contribution to health insurance was increased by 4% in the first year and by 9% in the second year. And the tax-deferred matching plan contributions were increased $100 at each level in each year of the agreement. There were a few other minor housekeeping and language changes in the contract, and the total of the new cost during this term will be within the parameters that you approved. On behalf of administration, I recommend you approve the collective bargaining agreement I just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. This is another action item tonight, so before we go into questions, is there a motion to approve?
Will approve?
Motion by Sakoudin, second by Suchin. Did I get that? Was it Art? Okay. It was motion by Art. I just hear a deep voice on this side of me. All right. Art, seconded by Suchin. Perfect. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Just, I know we've said thank you enough for all the work that negotiations team done on these agreements, but it's nice to see the last one coming before approval for this 2023 season, and now we get to start 2024, right? There is a motion by Art, seconded by Suchin. All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries on a seven zero vote. Thank you very much. That brings us to our school board and superintendent updates. Are there any board members with items they'd like to share tonight? Yeah. Go ahead. Suchin?
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly acknowledge one of the things that we approved today, which is the Volunteer Appreciation Week of April 22 to the 26. Our volunteers are incredibly valuable to our district, everything from the advisory councils to the PTOs to any of our events, and they truly, truly make the district amazing and invest a ton of their time and effort into the working of our district as well. So on behalf of the school board, I just want to express my sincerest gratitude to the volunteers of District 196. Thank you.
Here's Suchin. Superintendent Krieger?
Okay. First, I just want to take a couple of minutes to report that tomorrow morning, April 9, I will be a part of about 20 people representing our district as we travel to St. Paul for scheduled meetings with our local legislators and legislative leaders. We'll be advocating for our 2024 legislative priorities, which the board approved in February. One of the priorities we plan to focus on is asking for school board authority to renew a capital projects levy one time. This is the same local authority that the legislature granted the school boards last session for an operating levy. Capital projects levies provide funding for critical capital needs like technology for learning. In District 196, our entire one-to-one learning device program is funded with the money we receive from a 10-year capital projects levy that voters approved in 2015. That funding will run out after next year unless it is renewed either by district voters in a special election or, if we are successful in this request, by board authority. We believe our locally-elected school board members should have the authority to renew one time a capital projects levy, and so we will be talking to our legislators about that request. Next, I want to invite parents, guardians, and other residents to consider applying for an opening in one of our district's citizen and staff advisory councils. The budget advisory council and legislative advisory council are currently accepting applications, and openings on other advisory councils will be coming soon. For more information, visit the district website at district196.org. And finally, I want to encourage everyone to take in a high school theater performance this month. All four of our comprehensive high schools have shows that open the week of April 22. Eastview High School is having its annual variety show, Bravo. Apple Valley High School is performing the play Working. Eagan High School is having its annual variety show encore. Rosemont High School is performing the play Mean Girls.